Ladies and gentlemen, good morning, good evening, good afternoon, and welcome to Scottsburg's County Council. This is Monday, June the twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, in the year of our Lord. We're calling our council to order here this, uh, this evening. So if you're all alive, let's all stand up and pray. We begin with prayer, pledge allegiance, or have a roll call, right? Father, we bow before you this day to thank you for, for your provision. Father, so many things going on in this world. You said to Adam, "May you go and, and fill the world," and that's what they've done. And we have a lot of folks here. And so, Father, it's, uh, it seems like we're getting so close to the end of days. And it's been two thousand years from the time you walked this earth and, and was crucified, rose, and ascended into heaven. Two thousand years, Father, and you're coming soon. And we just bow before you and thank you for the time you've allowed us to live. You could have put us in any, any time period, but you allowed us to live in these days. And while they have a lot of comfort, air conditioning, medical, and so many things, Father, there are a lot of hard things that's been brought about these by families. I pray for our families, I pray for our council, and I pray for, for our legal council, and for Jan, Father, and all that's here with us, with the city. Father, we just, we just want your presence, we want your, your mind, we want your approval, and we want your love and we praise you, Jesus, and we pray, amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen, thank you. Next is our roll calls.
Mary Amy?
Here.
Tim Hall?
Here.
Rick Cozart?
Here.
Tim Twalwood?
Here.
Christian Evans? Mark Nicholson?
Here.
Good evening. Good to see you. And, uh, next, our agenda this evening is the approval of minutes of June tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We've had a chance to read over those. And you see no errors, typos, or pins running off the side of the page. We'll accept the motion to, accept the minutes as presented.
I'm making a lot of good comments.
Because the motion is our second.
I'll second that.
Kevin seconds that. Uh, any questions, comments? Very well, if you ever say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Amen, thank you very much. Okay, next we have the public commentary of the City of Scottsburg Council. When we accept public comments, individuals wishing to address the council, we ask to come forward, state their name for the record. Each person will have five witnesses. Your voice or opinion remarks should focus on issues and not be used to target employees or elected officials. Come forth if you have anything you would like to say. Going once, going twice, going thrice. Coming here, we'll close our public meeting, thank you very much. Going down next to new business, we have a settlement agreement with Regional Sewer. This has been going on for probably a week and a half or two days that we've heard about. It's almost, I'm just kidding. So, uh, this has been going on for probably, uh, four years. So, uh, I'm gonna let Josh explain, uh, some of the legal areas that we were all in with, with Regional Sewer, and Regional Sewer was the City of Scottsburg, and, uh, what we're doing, and, and, uh, what the outcome here is. It's not, it hasn't been good for either party.
Yeah, I mean, at this point in time, uh, we are in federal litigation with Regional Sewer District, and, uh, we had had a lengthy settlement conference with the federal magistrate. And after a full day exercise in federal court in Annapolis, this is the agreement that was reached. Um, it's basically to resolve the litigation that is pending, um, so completely we'll conclude it. Um, there is a, um, a good, uh, finality, obviously, to the conclusion of litigation. Um, we, uh, we've had several issues that have been unsettled or that we've not had a real good handle on for quite some time. The biggest issue, uh, from my standpoint and for a lot of the city offices and for the county has been where the district starts, uh, where we end, and vice versa. So, uh, attached to this, you will see the, uh, the map, and we're very fine, nice, pretty colors. Uh, you can actually basically zoom in and see per parcel, um, where who serves what. We can see interconnects. Um, both sides and the engineers have reviewed, agreed, and everybody's on the same side as to, uh, agree as to, uh, who has what in the ground, where, and who is serving what. So, uh, that's a very important part of this. Uh, as far as future rate increases, I know that's one of the important things that we've talked about. Uh, this doesn't prevent future rate increases. It doesn't prevent them from having future rate increases. We just, uh, no one can, um, pre, you know, we can't single them out, treat them in different, any differently than we would tra, treat any, um, other rate payer. Um, there is a settlement amount, uh, we've obviously each side had, um, litigation fees. Um, this is a, they had sued Austin and Scottsburg. There will be a settlement amount of twenty thousand dollars within sixty days, um, up today, um, that will be paid. There will be no modification, um, unless agreed by both sides. No disparaging comments from our calling, Austin, or their body. Uh, with the district has a new, um, customer that is going to connect, uh, they're going to communicate with that with us. I know Chase has got forms that he has implemented, um, has been in use here within the city that helps the utility office. Uh, that's one of the things in the past that will, I think there's been excellent communication, that we will have that, and it'll help everybody know, help the district know, and help everybody. So, um, inflow infiltration, we know the district, they know they've had some issues. So this will, um, they're gonna use their best effort, we're gonna use our best effort, uh, to help and identify plans to address. So if we see an issue, we're gonna let them know, and they're gonna identify a plan to address that inflow and infiltration within sixty days that we've ident, that we've let them know of that, of that issue. Um, anything as far as, um, board seats? Um, the county council is the, uh, for, is the entity that appoints that board, the Regional Sewer District. So within, um, any time that they have a vacant seat on that board, at least forty-eight hours, um, prior to that December meeting, when that is typically when they, um, uh, fill those vacancies, uh, they are going to provide us, um, any of those names. And if there is a vacancy that is a one-off, uh, someone resigns or anything like that, uh, then it has to be at least seven days prior, uh, to that county council meeting, whether it's gonna be that take, take that request to action. Uh, 'cause that's been one of the things in the past, we've not really known, uh, who's on the board, when the board, um, uh, the terms and all of that. They've actually already provided it to us. Um, so we have, uh, no news on the board, we have an issue, who to communicate with, and, and all of that. So, um, so it's a, it's a fairly short, um, as far as the implications, um, short agreement, but obviously with many implications. So I'll leave it at that, if you guys have any questions, please let me know.
Let me tell you this little bit of history, because we have kind of a new council here. And the cap, you know, this Regional Sewer was something that was begun by the county back in probably the early eighties. Am I correct?
That sounds correct.
And, and sometime in the eighties here, and, and the boundary was basically everything west of sixty-five. And, uh, but as things began to progress for Scottsburg, um, it was kind of the previous administration and, and the Regional Sewer District, um, kind of kept expanding things and things of this nature. So they got it to the place where basically right now they had agreed upon, uh, a manhole that sits on the northwest side of Highway fifty-six and where, uh, what's the name of that lane? Um, if you've turned into the golf course, where that golf course lane is.
Chippewa.
At the end.
Chippewa.
Chippewa.
Chippewa is the point of the golf course.
Yes, that's the northwest side of manhole. That manhole is supporting two different pipes coming in, one from Regional Sewer and one from Mike Guthrie. And so that's where we're taking it. When I came in office, we put brand-new flow meters on, because I, I had heard that there was terrible INI. INI is infiltration and inducement. Inducement is you've got a pump in your basement, you're pumping it into our system. Uh, or you've got your, you've got your gutter, your eaves all drop, you know, pouring into our system. We still have, we still have areas like that that we are trying to identify and stop. Uh, but anyways, uh, this has gone on, and, and at times, what they pay us is double to triple of what we're getting. So these are brand-new systems I put in, I put three brand-new ones in. So we have been billing them basically at part for, uh, those levels. Now, they never paid anything, they never paid the excessive amount of INI we had. They've now paid a dime of it. They've paid by usage. The original agreement, while they said west of, west of the I sixty-five, but they never paid, they were supposed to be paying by flow the whole time. So they have just paid by, by the usage. We give them the usage, they take that times their factor, and we're charging everyone. When we, when Scottsburg got upraised, everybody at Scottsburg, we went up to, we went up to ten dollars and, and, and I think it's ninety cents per thousand.
Ninety-nine is what I understand it to be.
They're seventy-nine, they're seventy percent higher. So with this understanding, there's nothing that was put in paint, on paper, but with this understanding, they said they would reduce their rate. Now, with, with me having that, that's the big thing I wanted to try to accomplish, because, because, uh, Kevin, you're there, that's your, that's your district. Because you want them, I want those folks out there, that's our highest tax increase. And I want those folks to be able to, uh, you know, have a better rate than this. I mean, they're paying seventy percent higher. So, you know, so, uh, but again, if you have questions, please let me have them. If you've got questions now, I'm happy to answer them. Josh handled the legal part, I'll handle this part, and, and if you've got any questions, comments, you know. We've also had issues with, with them responding to issues. We've, we've literally, Scottsburg really had basically most all the repairs for years and years. And since, since this administration's come in, uh, you know, we've, we've done very little. We, we ran one line off the bat that, that they couldn't get them in the Willow Shore. We had basically toilets overflowing and, and bathtubs are going into bathtubs, and so we, you know, we basically took the lock off and we repaired it. So, uh, they said no building, they're picking. So, uh, so it's, it's not been a, a warm and fuzzy relationship, but we're trying to coordinate the best for our citizens. And part of that is, is getting the repairs done in a timely manner, and it's, it's having rates that are affordable by people, so. So there is the thing, so what question do you have about the agreement itself? Or questions you might have about?
I agree that something needs to be done, but from what I've followed and learned, this, this rate here is less, it's, it's based on my twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one rate study.
Right.
That, that, that twenty-twenty rate, rate study, you know, well, I do, local price, a dollar higher than it was in twenty-twenty-one. The cost of this has went up as well. We're not at, at six dollars a thousand, you're losing money.
We're not losing, but we're not making, because that's basically our cost. Our cost is right there, that, I tried to cover our cost. Now, are we losing money if you take the overall debt and things of that nature in? Yeah, we are. But if I talk about, if I talk about electricity, if I talk about the chemical, if I talk about these things, and I got that, I got that straight from, um, we had, we had a, anyway, I think it was five dollars and thirty-seven cents or something like that. I mean, so six dollars, I felt, would cover our expense only. Now, the problem there is we lost any type of profit that we needed for our debt on that. So now we're looking at different ways and venues, and we've come up with several to, uh, to help remedy some of this loss.
Right.
So. And again, there is nothing that prevents us from doing a rate study and changing our rate.
Right, so how long did a, a rate study and, and changing rate take?
What's going on right now?
Quite some time.
What's going on right now? We're gonna come get?
I mean, yes, it's a process.
And how easily can we raise this rate if we need to raise it?
It's probably about a four to six-month process.
Four to six, yes. If that's all it is, then we're in good shape.
And, and it should be done on a yearly to two-year basis anyway. And I, you know, and, and that's something that I would expect the legislature to start pushing down to, um, non-control, non-by-oversee utilities. Um, it, it's my understanding that it's something that's probably coming down the turnpike for us is, uh, because the legislature doesn't like hearing from us that you want some of these huge rate increases once every five years, that they want to see non-control utilities making more one, two, three percent increases more consistently than these high ten percent, you know, twenty percent increases once every five years. So, I mean, that's something that we, we need to do anyway. But I mean, to your point, I mean, rate studies aren't cheap. I mean, there's not many people in the game that do them. Um, it, it's, it, we're, we're kind of limited on who can, we can get to do them. Um, it, it is, um, there's not much of a market to find people to do. Um, so, and then we were in litigation, we had the, one of the only players in the game do it when we were doing it. They had the same company do it at the time, um, while they're in. So, you know, we didn't change our rate, and we've not changed our rate since then. We had the rate studied up, so, you know, there's nothing in the agreement that would prevent us from changing the rate now. And, and it's the same for them.
Well, I just don't want the local people that's paying now to have to pay more in order to settle this agreement.
No, no.
And, and it just looks like we would have to in the long run to do that. If we're not, six dollars a thousand does not cover the cost of treating that sewer.
If you take all factors in, you're right. The, the main factors I had were taking in was the, was the actual chemical, was the actual electricity, were those things. And, uh, you know, so, but we do have a bond payment that has to be made, and so we have to have some vehicle, I wish to, to pick up that gap and then also get a little bit more. And I totally want to underline what Josh said as well. As a city, we cannot be a city that's just not gonna give rate increases, and then all of a sudden we're having to give a ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty percent rate increase. That hurts everybody.
Sure, Ben.
If we just go a percent, two percent, three percent, maybe five at most, I mean.
If we're gonna give them a lesser rate, we're still gonna have to raise rates to our locals that we already?
They're, they're gonna have the rate increases too.
Right.
In other words, if, if we raise it three percent, they get a three percent raise. So, so, uh, but we do have, we do have some things that we're gonna be bringing before you, uh, that, uh, will help close that gap. So, uh, you know, but again, I do want to emphasize that, that we really have not had any rate increases. This rate increase was put in seventeen, so there's not been a sewer rate increase in seventeen. And only other rate that has been raised, there was a slight three percent on the water. They're putting in all new water meters right now, that some of you may know. Tim, I know you know that, Kevin, and you know, we're putting, the old meters were just not, were just, we had, I think we were trying to read seven, six to, six to seven hundred, you can ask your son about, six to seven hundred meters of, of water. I mean, it was, it was terrible. And these are, these are things that, that are supposed to hear, just, we get to automatically, we hear our office. And with these new meters, that all works. And so we've been very vigilant in that. And, uh, you know, so, uh, but, but, yeah, that's, you know. So again, I, I, I feel like you guys are all on board with a small rate increase is one, two, three percent, something like that. And, uh, you know, and we certainly are probably gonna be looking at Chase's numbers, uh, for an increase as well. He hasn't had anything, and he doesn't yet.
Right. Well, I mean, I don't, if anybody else has a comment, but I make, I make a motion. We table this until, until we do get Chase's numbers and see what we need to do from that point.
Well, this has already been put forth by, this is, this is an agreement that we made. Uh, now we're prolonging litigation. If we prolong litigation, right now there's a three-hundred-and-small-thousand-dollar litigation against the city of Biden. We also have litigation against them. Now, if this continues to go on, this can put into more litigation, which is gonna cost everybody more money.
Sure.
Right now, this is what we've put in concrete. This is here to be passed. And, and, and while, while Chase says, "Yeah, I'm gonna lose this," we've gotta make it up in other areas. And, and I've talked to him about this. And, uh, and that's the areas we're gonna, we're gonna make it up to him.
Yeah, I have two other thoughts based upon the conversation of this. There, there's two things that, I mean, the litigation has not only hamstrung us from some development, it's also hamstrung them, and at least two developments that I'm familiar with from clients, because of uncertainty in their district, where developers have not lit, and, because they're not really sure what their long-term viability or stability is at the, this provides them, they know what their, what their financial stability's gonna be. This, if they know that this, um, litigation's going to end, it finalizes, it gives them stability in their contract, it would enable them to go get some additional financing. It, it, it sets forth a plan where they can continue to operate. So that's one. So they, it's not like we don't get money from them. If they go add a fifty-house subdivision, we make money from that. I mean, they're, they're paying us for, you know, that. We make money from that, it's a good thing. Uh, so, second of all, if we don't pass this, what happens? The litigation continues. You know, can we win the litigation? Well, what does winning litigation mean? It means that they don't win, what do we win? I mean, there is nothing tangentially we get from winning the litigation. Losing litigation, they're asking for territory, defined territory, and litigation fees and expenses. So if we were to go to trial, which would be several hundred thousand dollars on our end in attorney's fees, and lost, and the judge determined that the map was, let's say, west of the interstate was theirs, some of our higher rate-paying customers, and we have to pay their attorney's fees, which would probably be half a million dollars at that point in time, not only are we looking at a rate increase for everyone, it would be a substantial rate increase, we would have to bill that to a quarter of bills. That's another hundred thousand dollars. I mean, as you can see, the costs go on and off and on. So as I've previously told you, I'm telling you again, as your legal counsel, I'm recommending the approval of this agreement.
Yeah, I do have one question. You mentioned their debt that they, that they have not paid. Does that, does this agreement forgive that debt that they have not paid?
This settles all matters, settles all matters.
So I, I have a question. What's gonna keep them if we have a rate increase and, and they don't want it? Do they still have to pay the increase?
They have to pay the increase.
To attend the contract or settlement, but we get ready to argue with it, or they argue with it.
It is. Well, anyone can object to a, a, a rate increase, or there's a process, but it has to go before I U R C, you know, after there's a statutory process. So it's if any, anytime a utility raises rates, there's a process you can go through to check to it. It's an expensive, time-consuming process. That's why you very seldom do you see anyone actually do it. Duke has had, uh, some large customer bases do it, when it's like massive companies that have several large plants across the state, et cetera, um, have come together to challenge, um, rate increases, but, um, generally, no, that does not happen. Um, financially speaking, I, I don't, would not foresee that. And then two, I mean, if, if the number, the numbers are the numbers. I mean, if you have a rate study and it, and it speaks for itself, I mean, that, that's the thing. When you go to, if it goes before I U R C to determine whether or not we have a valid, uh, rate, and we, we're based it upon valid numbers, it, it's gonna come out in rate study. Did we, and, did we pick on, and, and, you know, does the rate study show that we, we took into account things across the board, or our debt service, all the good things that, that were required to take into account? That's what we're gonna look at, I mean, and that's what it's gonna come down to. So, uh, I mean, you can challenge if you never, anybody can. So it's why I don't even wanna pony up the, uh, the money to go do that, and that rarely happens. But there's a process that anyone can do that.
Well, I just wanna make sure that with this agreement, that, uh, they're starting by the rules. Apparently, I haven't been playing by the rules.
Well, again, there is a non-disparagement clause in there, that they can't dispare just, we can't dispare ju, them. So, and that's the whole goal here, is that everyone's gonna start getting along. A, as we've discussed, um, you know, since the litigation, they have lines, some of their lines, they've started doing some amendments work on their lines. Um, they have, they have a new engineer, they have a new meeting space, they are meeting in public. Um, they have taken several steps. They do have a, um, properly-appointed board, which they had admitted in, um, federal court that they didn't previously. Um, so they have taken several steps, uh, without this litigation, wouldn't have probably happened. So, I mean, there have been things that have been accomplished through this.
And then another thing, when there are rate events and they are over, and they're going over their amount, they're paying penalties, it's gonna go into an account. And, and, um, to help correct those issues. So there are several things with this that I want you to know, that, that, um, we're looking at it from our end, and, and it's, it's probably four hundred customers, I'm gonna say, something like that, I would think. And, um, you know, we're servicing, uh, three thousand plus. So it's, is it, is it ten percent or better? Probably about like that. And, uh, you know, so we've had to find a way by which to supplement that deficit that Tim's concerned about. And I, and I, I totally don't agree with Tim, I mean, he's right. And we do need to, to find a way here, and, uh, and that's gonna come before you.
Well, you know, this, my discussions, at this rate, we're losing eight thousand dollars a month. Well, somebody's gotta make up that money here. You're not gonna do it overnight by those other things that you're wanting to do with the?
Yeah, I think you would, what we're looking at. I'll, I'll do the, I'll do the numbers on for you, but, but, uh.
Well, yeah, that's, that's on, that's on retail numbers. You've got a motion out here, so, you, you got a motion, so.
So we have a motion that Tim wants to, 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 uh, put this down, is there a second to that?
Motion to table.
The motion to table.
I think we should just get it over with, just go ahead and pay it, let's move on, let's?
Well, right now, so, I mean, I'm asking for, if, if anybody wants to second his motion?
Okay, I'm certain.
So, um, if we don't have a second, then we'll go back to, to see if somebody wants to pass it. But right now, Tim only has a second, or has a motion to table this agreement with Regional Sewer. Is there a second? One, once? Twice? So, so let's go back. Is there a motion to go forward and pass this agreement?
So have the minutes reflected, the motion dies for a lack of second.
I don't think we have any choice, we just have to pass it, don't we?
So are you thinking a motion?
I'll make a motion because we're gonna have to pay it anyway.
Yep.
We need to get behind this and get away from it. I'm not gonna spend twenty thousand dollars.
And I don't wanna spend twenty thousand dollars, but it's not gonna change the numbers. I mean, at least we have a way to recoup some of that money for their construction and, and stuff like that, and you'll be, be this whole death, and I don't think we'll make any difference. I mean, we're gonna have to pay it. I mean, we're legally, we're binding out with it.
There's been things that have been put in place too, that they weren't doing, that they're doing now. In other words, they have to come and before, they have to fill out forms which we know exactly how many gallons we're gonna be putting in, they weren't doing these things. So, so anyways, I'm sorry, we have a motion by Rick Cozart to go forward and pass this as presented. Is there a second to that?
Mark Neff.
Mark Neff is in seconds. Now, with this, we can ask for questions and comments. What questions do you have about this?
Well, I would say, since this affects my district, uh, I feel like that this is an avenue, you know, for the people that, that's in that part of the city to be able to get a better rate, obviously, than what they're paying, because it's crippling to them right now. And when you got, when you go across the workforce and you can see people over there that's paying less than what you're paying, I know that's a real unfavorable situation. However, and if I'm interpreting this wrong, correct me, but kind of to your point, Tim, we're talking, you said four hundred houses, right? Out of three thousand?
Three plus.
Okay, so we've got a small, very small portion, but if I look at this correctly from a business perspective, we're not making at, at ten ninety or whatever it is, we're, that would be covering everything, and it'd give us what we need to exist to, for improvements and all overhead. At this wholesale rate, we're basically, we're not making anything, but we're not losing anything at the current numbers, is that the way I understand it?
What we've, what we've lost is.
We're not making because of the ten ninety would be us making. We would actually be making money at the ten ninety.
It's the profit margin.
That's the, that, that's your profit margin. You would be looking at about a forty percent margin, where now you're, you're not getting anything from those three hundred and sixty houses or three hundred houses. But what you are doing is you're affording those opportunity for those people to have, uh, you know, to enable their, their life to be better because they're not being helped uh pretty much constantly in this situation, the way I feel about it. I mean, that's, that's the way I have to look at it from people that go to me in this position, you know, they're, they're paying that every month. So, I gotta do my part to relieve that. And I, but that's the way I, I'm understanding. If I'm, if I'm missing something, please.
No, I think you, you have a spot on.
We get, we give them a four dollar ninety percent ra- rate decrease for them to help their people.
Yeah.
I'm hopeful they will do as much of that as they can.
Right.
Are they gonna do four ninety? I don't know. But I hope they would come down to a rate that is, that's acceptable to them.
We're giving them an avenue, a tool to do so, it's up to them to do, do the right thing.
Exactly. And, and I would think that the, the folks out there with this knowledge would certainly have a right to, to make a plea to them for this.
Right.
Because this is what's being done. So.
Well, with that being said, I want a second, Rick's motion.
Do you want a second?
Just a second.
So, is there any other questions or comments right here?
What's the twenty thousand dollars?
That, their original demand on attorney's fees was three hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and ten thousand, something like that, and, uh, the twenty thousand as well.
We don't, we don't near have those kind of fees that we, that we pay, that they actually had a very expensive attorney and, and they're, they have.
Mysterious?
Yeah, that's what it was. And I think this needs share this.
It is. Do they have to pay that to you?
With Austin.
Does Regional School pay that?
Regional School has paid for fees.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
They have all those fees to pay, and so, so, uh, and they were litigating against both Scott School and Austin on this. Other, other big questions, so. You, you all had good questions.
Well, I do have one. This new rate study that's supposed to be coming out, the way I understand it, this, this cost does not cover the cost now to process this. This new rate study, as well as anybody knows, is gonna be more and more, the way things are going, things are just going up and up and up. How long, when can, when's the first time we can hit them up for a rate increase?
There is no limit on that. There, there, as you can see in the agreement that you can read, there is no language that permits us from, there is no timing limit at all.
And, uh, you, you're saying a rate increase, did you say a rate increase does not have to go, no matter what it is, that there are certain rate increases that does not have to go before the I U R C?
There, no, we do not, we do not go. We're not regulated.
Now, for us to have rate increases, at least in my mind, gives us a better stand, stand on in court, so should somebody question us. So, we're here.
We have somebody question, then we'd have to go before the I U R C.
Correct, there's a process to challenge.
Right, okay.
So, if we can show in court, now, we've done our due diligence by having rate increases, we can, we can show the judge that here's why we've done this.
Right.
And this is our, this is what we've owed and, and, uh, and like I told you, my first time I came in office, just like you guys, I would, it was a summer day like this, and she was upstairs, and I wanted to know everything about what's going on. I went into her, I said, I said, how are we looking? She, she was older, she put her finger right in my nose and just shook that finger. And she says, Mr. Amy, it's, it's against the law for you not to charge enough money to pay your bills. And we have a department that was basically constantly borrowing money, uh, from the electric company to pay the bills, and then in December they pay it back, and then January they borrowed again. And, uh, you know, so, and looking at that, we came up and we had, we had to give, I think it was a sixty-some odd percent rate increase, it had never been raised. And I looked into that as a question. So, so to me, if we put in place something where maybe, you know, three percent may sound like a lot, but if it's three, three percent on ten dollars, I mean, that's three cents, not thirty cents, that's three cents. So, I mean, you know, so I mean, we want it where people don't even see it, you know, it's an extra dollar, or an extra dollar times, or a dollar and a half, whatever, you know, times thirty-five hundred adds up, you know? So, uh, it does. Then we've got some things that are, again, it's coming out, that is not going to. Yeah. I just can't say right now. But.
Yeah, I understand, yeah.
So.
I'm just, I'm just concerned about the, you know, if it doesn't pay, that dollar figure does not pay for it. So, then you're taking one section of the area and giving them a rate, but you're not giving the people, the people, the, the people that we have now are gonna have to pay for it.
Well, and they, they, we needed, we needed a rate increase regardless. We needed a rate increase regardless of this, of these.
Well, yeah, I mean, that was part of the, of sure project that was.
Right, and, and while we had that, and while we had a little money in it right now, we, we've got to put some increases there. And maybe this first increase, maybe it's gonna be a four, five percent, I don't know, it's gonna be up to you guys on this. But, but, but we need to be in a place where these increases are one, two, three percent is all. And, uh, you know, we certainly don't wanna look at anything, uh, much over five, I mean, so, but, um, but I, Tim, I will get you those numbers, um, and, and, um, and I'll see just how close it does come to that eight thousand dollars. And, uh, you know, so, I would like to see the increase be an increase with us putting this in, where it's making up the, the deficit that we're not getting in the profit. And I think we can do that. And then the increase you're, you'll have will be overall rate, that makes more sense.
That makes, makes perfect sense, I guess, but I mean, I don't see how you, yeah, you're gonna make everybody pay for that and give them a heck of a rate.
No, no.
I just.
And, and.
Just go ahead, you know, I'm, yeah, I can agree to disagree.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. But, but let me have a chance to, to just, uh, get after a while and, uh, what we got, because it's not gonna affect everybody. And, uh, you know, so, um, but, okay, so we have a, a motion and a second. Are there any other comments now? You're not all, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So, we have one may, three yeses, and one absentee. Okay, um, now, with that said, I, and no, just as Jeff, there was something maybe sent to you about Regional Schoolwork, what they did this month? Is that something we won't talk about now or not?
We don't.
Just probably when it goes into.
Bring that up.
Promise me.
So, okay. So, we have a little something else that happened with him, and so, I think we'll handle that on the side to see what's gonna happen, so.
So, that motion basically is given the mayor, they put on the sign this.
Yeah, that's a little.
And does it go into effect today?
Yes, yes, yes. Yep, and you will scan that and send the ASAP to.
It makes it clear.
I'll do that.
Lower your feet.
Okay, what, what announcements do we have?
Nothing, nothing, no.
I would like to make one announcement.
Yeah.
As you all know, and I, I appreciate everybody that attended my funeral, David Wells, which I knew you, I know Terry would have been there if it would have got tied up, we had several community there. David, of course, most people know that David was deputy chief of the fire department for some years. Chief, chief himself, Richie showed up for the funeral and for visitation. Don Ant's husband, Randy, was there today. We really appreciate those young men being here.
I don't know if you all know David Wells, but David Wells was a, was an amazing citizen, amazing man. Was, loved the Lord, uh, worked for school most of his life, he could do, I think, anything. He, you know, he handled all of the, uh, maintenance, I believe, for all Scott School District Two. He was a school bus supervisor, uh, he was a friend, he was, whatever you needed, David was there. And, and I was gone when this happened, I was, uh, in, in New York, and so, um, and just got back two hours, two and a half hours, so, uh, due to cancellations, so, um, and forgive me for not having remembered him in my prayer, and his family. So, you know, when you have a person who's had fifty-plus years and David has had that, that's a whole new chapter of life for him and for this family. So, please keep them in your prayers and, and, uh, you know, so, David's a good man. Thank you, thank you. Jill, Jill, tell us a bit about, uh, Andy Griffith and Don Knotts.
It was great, and we're tired, and it's over. We have the fair parade coming up Sunday.
So, Chief, you go be in the fair parade?
Oh, yes.
Okay. So, uh, you lead the fair parade?
Lead fair parade, have our respects before and all that.
There you go, there you go. Well, kudos to Jill and team. I think she had, uh, our two interns and, I think Emily was there, and did you have some of the guys interned, did you have some?
Yeah, we had the, all four interned. Couldn't ask for better kids, uh, worked hard all weekend, uh, Stacy and Emily worked hard all weekend. It was a big effort for a big event.
Unfortunately, we had a lot of heat.
Yes, we did have.
I'm not talking for the people, I'm talking for our Lord, you know, it was very hot. So, when we have outside events, that sometimes hurts, so, but still, from what I've heard, it's, it was, uh, it was very good.
Yeah, we already had, we've got emails already today saying what a great job, they appreciated it, loved it, wanna come back, they love our city, so, it was, it was good.
Amen, amen, so. Anything else? Castle?
I don't have any, um.
Okay, okay. Well, if we have nothing else, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a vote to adjourn.
We're adjourned, thank you.